Okay, we're on the air.
Well engineered.
Good evening and welcome to the Long Hill Township Planning Board meeting for May the 28th. We have a healthy agenda tonight, but if you can move fairly quickly through the agenda. Would you please do the honor of the announcements?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting or hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting and hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting or hearing conducted by the board is a quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial meeting hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, rule call. Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Present.
Committeeman Ray is recused this evening from this meeting. Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. Opalka?
Here.
Mr. Sandow?
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda is just to go over and approve the meeting minutes from April 23rd, 2024. I guess everyone's had an opportunity to review those minutes. Are there any additions, questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It means pass.
Let the record show that I did not vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sandow.
And who else didn't vote?
I didn't because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Oh, Brendan didn't vote.
He's not here.
Because he's not here anymore.
Okay, onto agenda item number eight regarding applications. We have an extension request for block 10801 lot 3 at 621 Valley Road. This is application number 2020-07P made by Elite Properties at Long Hill LLC. Is there a motion to accept this extension request?
Do we have anyone present for, to speak on the applicant's side?
No, they submitted a letter to
Thank you.
the board's attention on April 22nd.
And the reasoning?
The reason is due, well, they ask under two criteria. One, under the board's authority to extend for good cause. That's section 52A of the municipal land use law. And they also requested it under 52D, which is when the applicant experiences delays from outside agencies. As we know, there's sewer capacity issues, so they haven't secured the appropriate permitting from New Jersey American Water. And as such, they've asked to extend their approval from, which would have expired on April 26, 2024, to April 26, 2025. And my office did circulate a resolution to that effect that could be passed with an affirmative vote.
Right.
And just for, yeah, just for record keeping, 621 Valley Road, that is the consignment shop? Or is that the one next to, right here or Gillette's Four Corners?
It's this one, closer one.
The one right here? Okay, so it's right here.
We've not received an application yet for the consignment.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, across from the strip mall.
Yeah, yep, the nice strip mall.
I have a question down here.
Yes?
I have a comment about one word on the second page of this resolution. Well, maybe it's the third page. At line eight in the whereas paragraph, it says delays in obtaining the necessary TFA from the sewage authority having jurisdiction. I don't think that New Jersey American Water is a sewage authority. I think they're a sewage utility.
That's correct. You can make that as a motion to adopt the resolution as amended. It should be sewer utility and not sewage authority. That's correct.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Tom.
I think we need a roll call vote.
We do. Yep. Mr. Sandow?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Opalka?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have-
Wait a minute, did we just vote on the resolution or did we vote on the amendment to the resolution?
The extension request.
As amended.
With the amendment.
With the amendment, resolution as amended by your company.
Okay, so do we now have to vote separately on the resolution itself in its entirety?
No, because you can adopt the resolution as amended orally.
Yeah.
Whatever you say.
That's what we voted, that's what I voted on.
Yeah.
Was the amended resolution.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, will the applicants come forward for please the Myersite Plan? This is block 12302 lot 13. This is in the Millington Village Zone, or soon to be, or I guess future Millington Zone, for 1891 Long Hill Road, application number 24-09P for the Millington Volunteer Fire Company. Thank you, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, board professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post-Palak, on behalf of the applicant. The applicant is in fact the Millington Volunteer Fire Company, who may be familiar with their work, hopefully not too familiar with their work. Subject property hosts their firehouse. It's a corner lot located on the southwest corner of Long Hill Road and Crescent Drive in the Millington section of the township. On April 4th, 2024, the applicant took delivery of a new ladder truck to replace an aging and significantly smaller ladder truck. New apparatus is 51 feet long, and while it does fit into the center bays of the firehouse, which are the longest bays in that building, it does so with very little room to spare in front of it and behind it, as you can see in the photographs that we've submitted. This makes it difficult for firefighters to maneuver around the truck, especially when wearing full turnout gear, increasing the danger of a firefighter physically striking a corner or an appendage of the truck and-
Hold on, Mr. Zelli.
Dennis? Hold on. Okay, please continue.
Again, this, the lack of space between the end of the truck and the back wall makes it difficult for firefighters to maneuver around the truck, especially when wearing full turnout gear, increasing the danger of a firefighter physically striking a corner or an appendage of the truck and injuring him or herself. In the rush of an emergency call, the risk of doing so is increased. Applicant therefore wishes to construct a modest 4.8 foot or 72 square foot bump out at the rear of the southermost of the two center bays to provide room for safe maneuvering around the truck. This proposed expansion will require two bulk variances, one for a side yard setback variance of 1.2 feet where 10 feet is required. I will know that 6.2 is the existing situation. Will also require de minimis bulk variance for an increase of 0.3% from 79.4 to 79.7 where 60% is permitted. There's been prior variance approvals for the existing conditions. I have three witnesses this evening, but we're going to try to set a record for the fastest delivery we can do in three witnesses. We have Patrick Golden, who's a member of the company and also the contractor of record, Thomas Ellenberger, our architect, and Bill Hallows, our engineer.
Great.
So what I'd suggest to the candidates is swear all three at the same time and-
Yep. Can you all stand and raise your right hand? Do you all swear affirm that any testimony you'll give in front of this board will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Mr. Golden, you're up first. Come right to this mic if you would.
And Fred, I just want to note for the record as well that I did review your notice. It was timely served, timely published, and its content was sufficient.
Thank you.
And are we good with the qualification of the professionals?
We're going to go each one when they come up.
Okay, do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden, would you introduce yourself, including giving your address for the record?
My name is Patrick Golden. I live at 673 Long Hill Road in Gillette.
G-O-U or G-O?
G-O-L-D-E-N.
Thanks.
And what is your connection with Millington Volunteer Fire Company?
I've been a member at the fire company for more than 48 years. I've held all of the line officer positions, including chief. I've been a former trustee. I'm currently the chairman of the building committee, and I am also the training officer in the company.
And even though I'm going to have you testify primarily as a member of the fire company, just for the record, what is your name of your company and your connection with that company who's doing the work?
So the company I work for is called GoldCon. We're located in Sterling, New Jersey, and we're primarily general contractors and endeavor to put this addition up if so approved.
So from your perspective as a member and officer of the fire company and in charge of the building committee, why do we need this?
Well, I mean, it stems from the need of the apparatus, truly. So the current apparatus that we have that's in its last leg of its service was purchased 32 years ago. At the time, it was a modern piece of apparatus for the needs of the town. Since that time, that purchase, the needs of the town have slowly changed over time in a variety of ways. And one of the things that we do when we choose equipment is, is that we need, because of the long time lengths, we need to look forward. And so looking forward in town, we certainly, just with this previous extension right here, you know, are going to see some increased height and densities. We have some of those style now, but we have no four stories. The subject property just spoke of will be podium construction with three stories above it, so it'll be a true four story. So the ladder truck that we're, that we are going to take receipt of now has a capacity of 109 feet. The previous truck that we had was 75 feet. The previous truck could service most of the buildings in town, but one notable exception was Central School. So we really feel that, especially in today's day and age, that things like that should be as well serviced as possible. So to be able to get that additional reach, if you will, or service, the truck needs to be of a larger length. They never seem to get smaller. They always seem to get larger. If you were at the parade yesterday and noticed Sterling's 32, you know, Ford, it's much different than the trucks there are today. So we've purchased as modern and as serviceable a truck as possible, but that comes with additional height and length. We don't have to do anything height-wise, but we do have to do a little bit of work length-wise.
And as I indicate at the beginning, you can confirm this is true, the truck physically fits, but, what's the but?
Correct. So the, so the truck itself measures 41 feet. The bay measures in excess of 43 feet. So doing the math, if you pull your car in your driveway and you're in your garage and you have one foot in front and you have one foot behind it, it makes it rather tight. Currently, we have all of our gear placed along the back walls of, if any of you have been in the firehouse. So, so all of our members' gear lines up over there. So currently, getting the truck into the firehouse removes all those spaces for the gear and as well is still a very tight fit for the, you know, for the, for the apparatus. So, so from a function standpoint, we have now suffered somewhat with this new apparatus.
And obviously you have two choices if we're going to work with existing plates, which is either to bump out the back or bump forward in the front.
Correct.
And as I recall from reading prior resolutions, you can clarify this, there was some concern with the Board of Adjustment at the time about being too close to Crescent with, with the vehicles if they're parked in front of the building. So if we moved forward, we'd be even closer to Crescent, fair to say.
That's correct, and it's really just a technical issue, and that's the turning radius of these vehicles. So there's a maximum turning radius that we can get out of a vehicle for it to safely operate. So to be able to operate within the cartway without making an additional move coming out of the firehouse, the only, and with the additional length, the old truck is about 37 feet. This is 41, so it's about four foot longer. So the truck really needs to get completely out of the bay before we can actually start to make our turn. The, the back wheels are seven feet forward of the back of the truck, so if you start to make that turn before the back end is out of the truck, you will then damage the building. So we're four foot closer. We've been able to improve some of the turning radius through some features that we were able to incorporate in the design of the truck, but it is, it's, it's very close.
All right. I will ask further building questions of Mr. Ellenberger, just so we don't duplicate testimony, so I have nothing further from Mr. Golden at this time.
Would you like to have everyone testify first and then do questions? What would you-
The record's probably easier if you do one at a time, even though it takes a little longer.
Fantastic. First of all, thank you for your extensive service. It's an amazing record of service to the town. We really appreciate it.
It's, it's our honor, it really is. Yes.
Thank you. Questions for this witness?
Pat, this is the longest ladder in town, would it be? The 41 foot?
Yes, it actually is the only ladder as well, so as a part of the procurement process, we try not to duplicate anything. So there are certain vehicles that, that the Millington Fire Company has, that the Sterling Fire Company does not, and vice versa. So Sterling, for instance, specializes in rescue. So they, they have the rescue vehicle and would do all the extrication and rescue. We have the ladder, so we would do things that were associated with that. So, so the departments or the companies in the department are actually complementary to each other. So we would only then be able to get mutual aid, which, which we have good agreements. So another ladder would have to come from outside the town.
Thank you. And there's, there's no concern for the neighbors? Nobody's raised any issues about this?
Certainly not for the ladder itself. You know, the, the whistle occasionally becomes a bit of an issue, especially for, for new folks that, that move to a place that has, has never been around, a volunteer fire company. But we, we try to be good neighbors and make amends where we can.
Dennis, and then we'll come to Tom. Yeah, go ahead, Dennis.
Many years ago, we heard that the Berkeley Heights ladder was the biggest one around. Is our new truck bigger or smaller than the Berkeley Heights ladder?
Well, well, in, in measured profile, we are certainly smaller. In reach, we equal each other, although there, we actually, there are two different types without getting too far into the weeds. So, so we just have a ladder, okay? We do not have a platform. Berkeley Heights has a platform. They serve different purposes on the fire ground. Ladders are much more customarily for rescue. So we can, we can put them in service quickly, get a ladder up and make, as we say in the business, a grab. And, and that's, that's what our fundamental focus is. We do have a waterway and we can apply water, but it's really secondary to the, to rescue and the safety of our members as they operate.
Thank you.
Pat, why was the one bay chosen as opposed to the other or extending both bays?
The, that's the bay, so the, so the Crescent, okay, is, as you all know, is an inverted curve, okay? And that bay is farthest away from where the inverted curve is. So, so again, to be able to get out of the, out of the building, we did explore briefly opening up the back, but the, quite honestly, the cost drove us away from it. To be able to do this project, we're going to have to temporarily support the, the ceiling, which is, which is really our training room up above, and the roof rafters to be able to pull everything out and get some, get some new beams, and Mr. Ellenberger will talk to you about that. But the, the expense really kind of drove us away from going any bigger than, than what we currently needed now.
Okay, so and the one bay will be enough for future needs then?
It's, you know, I mean, so this, to be very honest, this is the fourth addition onto the firehouse, okay, since 1915. So, you know, I can't stand here and swear that, 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 that'll be the case, but certainly in foreseeable future and, and for the rest of my career there, that will satisfy.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. So again, thank you very much for your service to your community, also for your business being here in Sterling. Thank you for, for that as well. And thanks for addressing Tom's point about the bump out. Just, you made an interesting comment about some of the buildings that will be built here.
Yes.
When the sewer plant finally can accommodate. You made a reference that this building over here in Gillette, four stories.
Yes, sir.
Now, I've also heard it's only three stories. It's just parking down below. So depending on who you talk to, you're going to hear three stories and you're going to hear four stories. My question is, how tall of a building can your ladder truck accommodate?
It, it's, it's a little bit of a, of a mixed bag because it depends on where I can park.
Okay.
So if I can park, as we like to call it, at the number, right in front of the building, you know, I could reach, you know, six stories, seven stories.
But if you're not at the numbers and you're on a curve and you're trying to extend out, that may, that may drop to five or four, depending how far you can safely extend that ladder.
That, that, that is correct. And, and some of the projects that are proposed here don't really have good cartways all the way around them.
Correct.
So there are portions of those buildings that we actually can't, won't be able to get to at all, and would have to just rely on portable ladders for that.
Okay. The reason why I bring it up, especially for this board, is when we have applicants in front of us talking to us about heights of building, we're going to hear that parking is not considered a first story, even if it's underneath the building. It's the living space. So if it looks like four stories, but there's parking, it's only three stories, according to who you talk to. So that's the reason why I asked the question about how far that ladder can extend, because there may be future projects that come down the line that we're going to have to take into consideration, and we have to remember underground parking or first level parking is not considered a story.
It's not, but, but in absolute height, it's still-
In your book, it is a story.
It is a story. You can call it whatever you like, okay? There's an absolute height, yeah. And, and we do appreciate the ability to be able to comment, which we do do, on applications, and certainly the ones in the future, you know, we will be happy to comment and point out things as, you know, as they come up.
Yep. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Any further questions?
No.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Mr. Ellenberger, you're up.
For the record, do we have to accept his credentials?
He's, he only testified as a lay witness. He-
We were asking about credentials and-
Yeah, he was testifying only as a lay witness.
Correct.
And let the record show there are no members of the public here for questions for the applicant.
And we're not using Zoom?
As long as the board can see, except-
Okay.
Yes, fine. Mr. Ellenberger, would you give us your full name and business address for the record, please?
Sure. Thomas Ellenberger, 4 Walnut Avenue, here in Sterling.
And would you please give us the benefit of your educational and professional background?
I'm a graduate of Temple University, licensed to practice architecture, stayed in New Jersey for 22 years, and my license is currently in good standing.
I ask that he be qualified as an expert in the field of architecture?
Anybody have any? Okay, approved.
Ellenberger, you are the architect of record for this project, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, could you take us through your plan? And if you would, as you're going through your testimony, explain why a rear bump out is preferable to a front bump out, other than the reason we've already heard, which is obviously significant, but from an architectural perspective, from a construction logistics perspective?
Okay.
So this is identical to what you submitted?
This is exactly what was submitted, yes. So the bump out in the back is the logical location, constructibility. It'll be supported by a single beam going across the back. The trapezoidal shape is really determined partially by the size of the truck, but also the existing generator that's in place. We didn't want to encroach too close for serviceability of that existing generator. The construction will match, as far as construction type, it will match what's existing. It's a masonry building, single, in this section will be a single story with a wood frame roof. That'll be finished with a metal roofing material with a, kind of a standard shed roof. As you can see from the elevation, standard shed roof, that'll be metal from the north side because of the slope or the grade from the front towards the back. You're really not going to see very much of the addition. It's kind of hidden towards the back lot.
Is it fair to say that to enlarge from the front, even if we didn't have a truck issue in turning radius and so forth, would it be more involved to try to expand from the front?
Well, the, the challenge with the front, from the architecture standpoint, is that the, the way the roof works there, it would, you would then be dealing with a, a roof structure of the existing, trying to deal with that structurally. Where here, the addition stays below the roof line, so really it's just kind of a budding up to the existing masonry.
And is it also fair to say that from the back, since it's somewhat invisible, as you've indicated, we can bump out just the one bay, where if you tried to do that in the front, just given the appearance of the building, it would be tricky. You'd have to really expand both bays.
I, I agreed, yeah. I think you would be addressing both bays.
Nothing further from Mr. Ellenberger?
Questions for this witness?
I assume the area you're proposing is more than sufficient for the size of the ladder. You're not constrained by the lot line or anything like that, are you? Just want to make sure the bump out is very sufficient for what your needs are.
I think, I think it'll get the job done. Is it generous? Would, would we like to, would it be better with a, a, a larger setback? Yeah, absolutely. But from what I understand, I think that'll be enough for the equipment to be in place and still provide access for the team to get beyond the vehicle to this side or transverse between the two bays.
Just curious, is it, are you going to have a back door to that? Is this just an odd question?
No, it's strictly a bump out. Very simple.
Any reason not to have a back door?
Um.
For access?
I don't know if, is there any thought to back door?
No.
No need?
No need to. Okay.
And the only question I have is associated with the concrete pad around the generator. So will that then be removed to accommodate?
Listen, listen. There is a small section that will be removed.
And then the utilities, because I noticed when I walked the site, all go along the back there from the generator.
That's where you get fancy. So there is a conduit of several different, mostly electric going across the back of the building to the generator. And what our plan is, is to essentially leave that in place. So there will be a beam supporting the opening, the span across the back, and that's an approximate location where that conduit would be. So intentionally, essentially, the conduit is outside the building. It would enter the building, go across, and then get to the generator. So we're not relocating substantial-
So it's really a ceiling height? Is that a ceiling height on the inside?
Uh, it's, it's above. So the beam height should be about eight foot six, and the conduit should be about, somewhere about a foot higher than that.
And eight foot six is sufficient for the truck to go under it or? Thank you. Right?
Yep.
That was going to be my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
And I-
And I, you, I know that, that there's been a couple of additions put on since the very first, where we closed up the front of the building in whenever nineteen something or other. And we had the back part and then we added a third part that, that this is the only place the ladder truck can go.
Um, my understanding, yeah, my understanding, and I think Mr. Hollis will be able to, um, provide further testimony.
Okay.
As far as this location for this truck is due to the turning radius to actually exit the building safely.
Okay. I'll wait for Mr. Hollis then.
Actually, Mr. El- are there any other questions for Mr. Ellenberger?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, if you wanted, just hand the, uh, mic back to Pat for one quick, quick question. I'll have him answer that. Is there any existing bay that is even close to the length of this truck?
There, there's not. I mean, there could be some considerable reconstruction of the building, so it's, so as, as we like to say at GoldCon, we can engineer our way at anything. But, um, it, it obviously has a monetary impact. So, so this creates the balance between availability and monetary impact for the town.
I realize you could possibly engineer yourself out of a straight line, but, um, that last building all the way to the left looks far shorter. Uh, it's a large garage door. That was not a consideration at any time?
It, it certainly, it certainly could have been, um, but, but the, the point is, is, and this is, comes back into this engineering, and you could do it two ways, by the way, 'cause that is a paper street that's on the side of that. So that's Commerce Street on the side. So, you could have either raised that, the roof of the existing building and come out towards the Crescent, or you could have essentially removed all the foundation and the floor and everything and then gone out the side, okay, onto the, um, uh, you know, the paper street, Commerce Street, and then, and then exited left and, and gone on to, uh, onto the Crescent. So, again, there is, there's always possibilities, but, um-
I would imagine there would have been a lot more cost from the little bump out that we're just talking about.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars for, for either of those options.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollis, last but not least. Especially since the variances do happen to be civil engineering related, so. Date your name and address for the record, please.
William Hollis, 192 Central Avenue, Sterling, New Jersey.
Ever been in front of this board before, Mr. Hollis?
I have. Did a couple of, a couple of lot line adjustments recently.
Is your license still in good standing this evening?
It is.
I'd ask that Mr. Hollis be qualified as a civil engineer.
Any objection?
No.
Bill, if you would, just take us through the site and show us why we need these two variances, please.
Same question. This is identical to the plans that submitted ten days in advance?
Yes, it is. And I didn't render it, 'cause it's such a small, small addition here. We've got Long Hill Road on the, uh, left side of the drawing, the Crescent on the top of the drawing. We've got the existing building, which we've hatched in. And the area that we're talking about is at this lot line corner. And if you've been out there, there's the generator kind of marks where this area is. And the addition is, it's a five-foot addition. It's got kind of an angle to it. This building is not parallel to the property line, so at the proposed corner of the addition, it's 1.4 feet. At the closest point, which would be the corner, it comes to 1.2 feet. And part of this pad for the, uh, generator is going to be removed for, for the addition. We are seeking one, the side yard setback variance of the 1.2 feet and also a variance for coverage. And the, the addition is seventy-two square feet, but the net is fifty-one square feet additional because the, uh, the pad will be made a little bit smaller. And that comes out too. From sixty percent is allowed, a lot coverage. We're at seventy-nine point four today and we're looking for the variance to go to seventy-nine point seven, which is that fifty-one square feet.
Mr. Hollis, just before I forget, uh, you've reviewed Ms. Lahany's, uh, review report, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Mr. Vooch's memo?
I, I have.
Okay. And other than clarifying the 1.2 versus the 1.4, any other issues raised by either of those professionals that we need to address?
No technical as far as, uh, the layout.
Nothing further for Mr. Hollis?
Fred, what about what she, what Liz mentions at, uh, number three for the potential for a variance for the generator in the side yard as well? I don't think that was part of the prior approval. So if you wanna throw that in as a variance, just for record keeping?
That's probably a smart idea from a housekeeping's perspective and we did notice for additional variances, so yes, I would make that request. Thank you.
Do we know what the, what the setback of the generator from the thing is? Can we scale that so I can throw it in the resolution?
Do we go by the pad on that bill or from the actual generator, the setback?
Well, that's a good question. I think it's actually the generator. The other is, it's a little bit above grade, but not a whole lot.
Well, we err on the side of caution. Can you scale off the corner to the pad?
The-
Tightest distance to the pad?
I'm scaling about two and a half feet.
Two and a half?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was my only record keeping thing.
Thank you.
And we're sure that, uh, there wasn't, uh, already a variance issue for that generator?
Yeah, I read the prior approvals and it, it just, it slipped through the cracks at least there. When they went back to have the generator installed, it wasn't caught as impeding the side yard where they would have gone to the Board of Adjustment or, so for, or it's possible even that the ordinance was changed to include it as an accessory structure and it could pre-exist that ordinance, but to be safe, if they request it as relief, it's part of the historic record of the property.
Just for the record, that generator was identified in a tour that I was making with another applicant in two thousand and seven. So that generator was installed more than seventeen years ago, but the generator ordinance has not been changed in that length of time. So however the generator was installed, it was seventeen years ago, not conforming with the ordinance and probably wasn't at the time it was installed. And things kinda happened. It's easier to ask forgiveness, but I think the time has come to ask forgiveness.
Appreciate that. We appreciate Ms. Lahany for bringing that up initially and Mr. Flynn for reminding me.
So just one small thing on the first sheet. Lot elevens identified as subject property? The one, the one-story building, is this, is that just-
We'll correct that.
Okay.
I'm actually doing a site plan for that property, so, thank you AutoCAD.
Any further questions for the witness?
Just a minor point. Liz talked about fencing around the generator. Do we care about that or is that worth thinking about or not?
Well, I mean, one perspective, if you look at the rendering now, this bump out will kinda screen the generator, correct, from the street view or the street vantage point? Because the bump out is about the same width as the generator.
If there's only-
It hides half of it. It hides half of it. So it's a little more obscured.
If there's only two and a half from the lot line to that pad, if you put anything in there, it's gonna be next to impossible to get around the backside of it.
Yeah.
And, uh, the owner of Lot eleven is not here this evening, but I do represent him. Uh, and I know his biggest concern was, uh, that the footing or anything else wouldn't actually encroach on the line and a fence would exacerbate that concern even more, so.
Yeah, that's why I was asking earlier, is there any comments for neighbors? So you do represent the neighbors?
Yeah, he's absolutely aware of this application. We've had in-depth discussions, um, with far, with fire department personnel even.
So he's comfortable with everything and that it be?
And who's the owner of Lot ten?
Uh, is that-
Carbs.
Carbs, right, yeah.
That's eleven. Oh, below, that's ten.
This is ten.
Yeah, eleven is who we're talking about, correct?
So eleven, which you, which was most recently the ice cream shop, um, uh, and so there's pro- the Carbs property, which is on the other side of eleven, if you're familiar-
And it's also Lot ten, Carbs property.
Right, they, they come down. It's actually a separate lot, but their ownership comes down and goes behind both eleven and the firehouse to Commerce, as I recall. I take that back. No, it doesn't, does it go all the way behind the firehouse to Commerce or no?
No.
Does not. That's right, okay. So it goes, it goes all the way behind eleven though and then hits the, uh, firehouse.
And for clarification, your comment was on Lot eleven, the owner of Lot eleven?
Eleven, yes, I don't represent Carbs.
Thank you.
So are you, are you satisfied then with-
Yeah, just wanna make sure we discussed it, that's, um-
I think that's a point that she raised about-
Yeah, worth a discussion.
Okay, any other comments again? As Deb had mentioned, we have no members of the public here, so I think we'll move on to summation.
Okay, thank you. I won't reiterate anything about what we're proposing. It's very straightforward. As far as your positive and negative criterion, uh, it's either a C1 for both variances or all three variances now, if we include the generator, uh, all based upon the existing, lawfully existing location of the building itself. We can't go forward because of the issues with the turning radius and, and the location of Crescent Drive, so this is really the only feasible, uh, location. But from a C2 perspective, there are multiple, um, purposes of the municipal land use law that come into play here. Letter A, dealing with public welfare. Obviously, we're, uh, improving a, uh, building that is dedicated to public welfare and safety, so we're looking at that. For letter B, uh, which is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, et cetera, uh, we're enabling firefighters responding to such disasters to do so in a safer, more efficient manner through this addition. F, to encourage appropriate expenditures of public funds. We're expanding the firehouse in the most efficient and cost efficient, cost-effective manner, as Mr. Golden has indicated. Uh, letter H, encouraging the location design of transportation routes. We're taking into account here Crescent Drive and trying to set up a situation where, even if the truck were able to physically turn, if it were parked outside in the bay, it would be encroaching onto Crescent, which was something raised by the Board of Adjustment years ago. I, to provide a vis- uh, desirable visual environment. This might not be the prettiest addition in the world, considering it's just a block, but again, we're trying to preserve what is attractive, which is the front facade of the building. So by not having to touch that, uh, we preserve that, uh, that visual component. And again, uh, M is encouraging coordination of various public and private procedures with a view of lessening the cost of development, and that's exactly what we're doing here by, uh, proposing a solution that is cost-effective. And of course, these are, uh, public funds, uh, for lack of a better description, even though the company's, uh, independent. So for all those reasons, I think we satisfy the positive criterion for both C1 and a C2. Negative criterion, uh, we're dealing, as far as the generator goes, it's an existing condition that hasn't caused any problems so far and we don't expect it to in the future. Uh, the coverage is literally de minimis. We tend to throw that word around, but th- this is a textbook example of it. And as far as the main variance here, this, the closer setback, again, the only property owner who's really affected, uh, is comfortable with the application and, and I've expressed that on his behalf. So I think we've satisfied both the positive and negative criterion for both the C1 and C2. Thank you for hearing us this evening. We'd appreciate a positive vote.
Great, thank you.
So a motion to close the public portion and then we can enter deliberations?
Yes.
Motion to close public hearing, public, right?
Yep.
Public hearing, yep.
A second?
Hold on, Dave.
Hi.
Hi.
Was there a second? I didn't hear a second, David.
Second.
Okay, Tom.
Tom.
I thought you said the question.
Yeah, I thought you-
No, well, I was- Sorry.
That was a very sheepish second.
It was second with a question, second.
I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, are we gonna have a discussion of this before we vote?
Yes, absolutely. I wanted to get first, Matt, if you wanted to just summarize. My understanding is there are real no conditions that were discussed in this application, so.
No, other than correcting the, um, the inconsistency on the cover sheet, but that, that was, that was really it. It would just be the standard boilerplate conditions that we have, uh, in any resolution.
Okay. Please, I open it up now for board. Questions, discussion, comments? Yes?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to start by saying that I am very disappointed. That engine has been on order for a long time. We certainly knew how big it was at the time we ordered it. Replacing the existing ladder truck has been under discussion for at least five years, maybe more, and this machine was ordered a long time ago and we knew exactly what the measurements would be and we knew exactly how big the hole was in the existing garage that would fit it. And yet here we are, six weeks after the truck was delivered, uh, finally getting around to asking for this extension. That's point number one. The other point is this generator issue that our planner pointed out is really troublesome because as I mentioned earlier, that generator has been operating without a variance for at least seventeen years. And it has been the custom of both the boards to always require that an application include cleaning up all the pre-existing variances. And if you don't believe that, just look at Sterling Hotel. And, uh, at this point, when and if the truck ever comes back from the repair shop, it will fit in the existing building. It will be rainproofed, a little hard to get around inside the garage, I'll admit. But I think we have time to get this application revised to get it right. Otherwise, the, uh, the, the generator issue creates a very bad example for, uh, how people can do things on their own in this town without board approval.
Mr. Sandow, aside from us not catching it on initial application, which is exactly why we have the catch-all phrase in notices, what is the concern?
Thank you.
I think the applicant has already said we're going to clean up-
Right. We've requested this evening on our feet, so to speak.
Yeah.
Thanks to, uh, Mr.-
All I'm suggesting is that, is that there is no pressing hurry to approve this tonight. Because of the fact that the engine's been delivered, we'd known for two years that it needed a bigger space and, and here we are at the last minute. Another couple of weeks to get the application perfected, uh, so that we have something that, that really cleans it up and sets a better example for the other, uh, applicants in town. I think it's worth the time.
Any comments?
No.
In regards to the application? Or comments from Mr. Sandow's request?
Dennis, just for clarity, when you say revision, is it just particularly around the generator? The one point about the generator?
Say again?
The revision you're discussing or mentioning, is that just to do with the-
Well, Liz pointed out that the generator violates a whole number of rules about setback and we could, the board has the authority to grant a variance after the fact, seventeen years after the fact, but at least that would clean up the record. And that generator is seventeen years old, so maybe it's about due to be replaced in any way.
The request for the variance is on the table?
Say again?
The request for the variance has been made.
Well, I understand that, but it's not papered.
How would you describe, what, what language could go into this that would cover the cons-
It's, it's- This sort of thing, I mean, I, you know, I, I appreciate, um, Mr. Sandow's comments, but from a legal perspective, the applicant, when they notice this application, they use a allowable form of notice that says if the board professionals catch any additional relief that wasn't previously granted, the board is vested with jurisdiction to grant that request at the time. And, and another reason that you throw that catch-all language is if you make changes to the plans during testimony to accommodate concerns from the board, sometimes that necessitates additional relief. So, to the extent that the application documents could be amended to reference what Liz references in her report, I suppose that could be done, uh, but there's no reason that the board doesn't have the authority to, uh, consider the request on the record tonight, so.
So what, what language would you put into the resolution? So what, what language would you put into the resolution to cover that point?
It would be included in their request for relief. So on the first page of the resolution, when we list the variances that are requested, we have the side yard setback for the addition, 1.2 feet whereas ten is required. We have lot coverage, which is the seventy some odd percent, or sixty is allowed, and the setback for the generator, 2.5 feet where again, where ten is, is allowed. So it's the, it would be on the first page as a historic record of the property that they requested that variance.
Sounds like the approach to take.
Yeah.
All right. So do we have a motion with regards to this application?
With those three points that you articulated being covered, assuming that meets approval?
It does, thank you.
Just a question. If they do have to replace the generator, do they have to come back and request? If the generator gets moved an inch at this point, is there a way to make a catch-all that if the generator gets replaced that they don't have to come back? Because we said it's to the generator, not to the generator.
No, they did it to the pad.
Oh, I thought it was to the.
Yeah, that's, that's why I asked him to do it for the pad.
Out of an abundance of.
Covers us all the way around.
So as long as it, that pad doesn't move, they can replace the generator on the site?
Without needing further.
Without needing, okay.
Correct.
And you had testified that the pad is, or was it slightly elevated, you said? That's, that's from the ground surface?
Oh, it's elevated.
Yes.
It is elevated.
So as long as the generator stays within the confines of that pad, doesn't go over the edge, it would be fine, be covered.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I, I motion with those three conditions that we discussed, the approval of this application.
Yes, second.
Okay. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Melonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Opelka?
Yes.
Mr. Sandow?
Yes.
And Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you all very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you all. Thanks for you too.
I'll send you a copy of the resolution for your review.
Thank you.
Now, don't get a bigger truck. Or a bigger generator.
It's only, it's only to serve you. These are not self-help.
Or if you do put the application in your head.
Cut down on your fire.
My fire stays in the fireplace.
Okay, thanks. We're on to agenda item number nine, a board discussion. This is more of the workshop portion of our meeting to talk about some ordinances that Tom has helped to facilitate a introduction to and a summary of, and I'll turn it over to Tom in regards to just summarizing the, the three ordinances that are in development.
Yep. Happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, so we have the ordinance review. I don't know, are we a committee or a board? Are we an org or a team?
Yeah, you can't be a board, you're a committee.
I'm a committee, so I'm an org.
You're an org.
So we're an org. Consisting of Teresa and, and David, and we'll be working together to go through master plan, ordinance suggestions, things that come up in discussion when we're looking at applications, stuff that, it comes in from multiple avenues, so there's no one funnel. It's a bunch of funnels. And we, we have three. Now, before I go into those, Mr. Sandow raised up something about a generator ordinance. Is that something that we're going to have to talk about at some point that needs to be reviewed?
The generators, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
Generators don't come up that often.
Well, if there's something in an ordinance that where the generator is wrong, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a note and I'm gonna go back and look at it just to see.
I will interject there. I do believe that Liz and I in our discussions about generator, she mentioned it being treated as an accessory structure, thus needing to be six feet away from any primary or secondary structures. However, that's not really UCC code. That's one of those catchalls where, as the zoning officer in the construction department, we, we, we look at the setbacks from the property line, side or rear, can't be in the front yard, obviously. However, the generator itself, the placement of the generator against any accessory structure, be it a shed, a detached garage, or a primary residence or building, that's really dictated by the generator company itself.
Okay.
And is it, is it dictated by the type of generator? Because you have diesel.
It can be dictated by the type. It could also be dictated where it's next to. For instance, if there's a window or a door, I think it has to be five feet. If it's, if there's nothing on that side within a, a, a specific area, it can, it only has to be like eighteen inches, something to that effect. I, I, I'm.
Okay.
I don't.
We don't need to.
There's, there's a piece of stupidity in the generator ordinance that a generator can't be located within seventy-five feet of a zone boundary if the other side of the zone boundary is residential. Which means that if you have a business and you want to install a generator, and there happen to be residences across the street, and the zone boundary is the center line of the street, that means that the gen, your generator has to be located at least seventy-five feet from the center of the street if the other side of the street is a residential zone. And that's, that's a pretty hard test to pass because so many of our commercial lots are very small and don't, don't give you the flexibility to go seventy-five feet away from a property line or a zone boundary.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how to handle that.
All right.
But it's worth talking about.
All right, so we'll talk about that at a future meeting, so I've made some notes here, and I'll carry that forward by bringing suggestions to this.
Incidentally, that killed us. That killed an application in Gillette.
Right over here. The insurance place.
Yep.
Okay, so, thank you for that. Thank you for ringing that up, and we'll come back with some suggestions. And that's kind of how the process is going to be working, where we get, where we discover things. So we have three proposals or three ordinances that need to be reviewed. One is about home office signs in residential zones. The second one, residential sheds. I won't go into the history on how we came about this. And then the third is fences, walls, and hedges. I think that's, yes, hedges. So the first thing I want to talk about is the home office signs in residential zones. So the issue is that a sign in a residential area cannot exceed more than four square feet. So two by two or one by four. And in a recent application, that four foot sign, that four square foot sign did present a problem. So we saw, we, we made suggestions for that application to be eight inches by eighteen inches in residential zones, all residential zones. So that's what we did for that applicant, but I think there's some comments about some people, from people who may want to propose something a little bit different. And I'm happy to hear that. But I have circulated this spreadsheet, which everyone will get. And then it has the entire ordinance there for you to read, so you don't have to go mining for it. I've called out exactly where the language is that needs to be changed. We've offered suggestions for what those changes could be. And then I also added a comment field about how it ties back, how did this come to be? So for this one, it's the application over in Norwood. So the proposal is eight inches by eighteen inches, but I'm not hard fast on that. I'm happy to take commentary from around the table. So Dennis?
The sign for a home office, is that only permitted if the office, home office has been permitted under the ordinance? In other words, if somebody opens up an office in their home and doesn't have board approval, but the, but, which they could do. I mean, I've got an office in my house for my consulting business. But could, does that give me the right to put out a two by two sign?
Could.
Or do I have to get a, a board approval for the office use before the sign permission kicks in?
I don't think we need to get board approval for office use. I work from home, two days a week, three days a week. But that's.
But you're not commercially advertising.
No, I'm not commercially advertising. No, that's correct.
So you can't just throw a sign up on your lawn and say, "It's permitted because I have an office." You can't, you, you can't do that. It must be a permitted office before the sign. And then the sign is a, is a freebie. The sign doesn't have to be approved if it fits the two by two requirement.
Well, two by two is the current requirement.
So I think that's actually a pretty good point, because think about it, you just created an LLC of some company name, right? Nobody checks if you actually have it, and let's say it's something that's lewd or crass along those lines, right? You could put a two by two sign up on the front lawn that's permanent, and so it, I think it makes sense.
So it doesn't stop you from declaring you have a home office. All we're doing is addressing the, the size of the sign.
Sure. And, and, but I think that the signage saying that there should be a stipulation that the home office is approved for the home office use in the residential zone before you get the sign, I think is Mr. Sandow's point.
But isn't it the type of business that we really need to focus on? Because the type of business that this application was initially connected to was a chiropractor, or.
Right?
Where he's getting, he's having clients coming to the house, the home.
And so that would be like, that would be like a dentist, chiropractor, hair salon.
Right.
Is where you have people coming to that location that somehow maybe needs to be further clarified and defined in ordinance with regards to that becoming an official come before the board for that use.
I once had an attorney.
Different ordinance.
I once had an attorney who worked out of his house. And of course, he had no sign there, and very few people knew that he was actually open for business as an attorney. But I think he was sent, he retired. But, but I would object to that because he did have regular traffic coming in. He probably should have had zoning approval for the office use, and, and that would have granted him permission to put the sign up. But I think we have to tighten the whole process.
So there is a, an ordinance for home office, and that's 124.9. In that ordinance, does it specify what you have to do or how does it designate a home office?
Yeah, you need minor.
Yeah, but I, I can only remember two in the past ten years.
Hold on. I want to hear, I want to hear an answer to my question.
You need minor site plan approval if you're going to do a, a, a display, a sign display. So the difference is if you're marketing your office from your house, you have to meet the conditions in section 124.9 of the ordinance, or you would need a variance. Addressed in that is the percentage of your floor area that you devote to office. A sign is, signage regulations are mentioned and minor site plan is required. So if that's the, if to the point of Mr. Sandow, if you want to put a sign up and market your business, it has to meet the criteria of the home office ordinance.
But I, I'm not sure if that contradicts your ordinance here. 155, the following signs are permitted in all zone districts. Signs indicating, I'm sorry. A single ground sign or wall sign indicating, oh, well, it says a permitted home office.
Yep, and, and the, and the home office ordinance says. So they have to satisfy 124.9.
I think you're fine just editing the size.
Yeah.
And that I think alleviates what Dennis is.
Because it gets picked up as a minor site plan.
Yes.
Right, and, and, and in that ordinance, it says that any demonstration of such use, including signs, as permitted by 155.2, which cross-references the sign ordinance.
So then I think it's just a, a.
155.2?
What size acceptable.
Correct.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but I, I seem to recall, and I think it's even written, there's a two by one or a two square foot sign.
Two by two or one by four? That's four square feet.
No, but there, I thought there was a two square foot for house numbering. So a sign for house numbering or signage on a residence.
A couple of lines up.
Yeah, residence designation sign is not exceeding two square feet.
Two square feet.
That's pretty big.
Yeah, but, but that, that's a compromise. I think the eight by eighteen inches. I, I forgot to bring my props. I actually brought out some cardboard. I had it for the last meeting. But it seemed a bit small for somebody being able to view or fit their information on the sign and have it legible from any distance whatsoever. Whereas the two by one, which is already kind of in the, written into the ordinance, seemed to me to be more workable. That was, to just raise.
I'm fine with a two by one. Can I? That's, that's not like a.
Can I make a comment?
Yes. Sure.
So first off, these are offices in residential areas.
Correct.
Right? These are going to be doctors, dentists, acupuncturists, maybe certified public accountants. Go into any town. I grew up in Bayonne. They're on every street. It's a twelve by twenty-four and so on. That's your two square feet.
Yep.
Those kind of offices, the reason they have the sign is so people walk to the right house. And usually people know where they're going, so they don't need a four foot sign. Right? So I'd say cut to the chase, make a twelve by twenty-four.
Yep.
And, you know.
Yep.
I'd be even more inclined to worry about the colors.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and the texture of it is actually more like a.
Well, that would be the next thing when we're talking about what kind of signs would be permitted, or, or, what do they call them? Memento, monuments? What do they call them?
If it's a ground sign, it's a monument.
Monuments, okay, so, or an ugly wire sign that we're now starting to see because the primaries are coming up, but.
A blinking neon.
The blinking neons, right, you know. So that I believe is in another ordinance, or that's something that has to be dealt with in another ordinance? What types of signs that those are, right?
Yeah, but you could still put specifics in to this ordinance.
Well, I would do, I'm gonna take that as a takeaway. At least, let's address the sign, the, the sign, and I like the twelve by two. I'm not married by the eighteen. So are there any?
Can you, can you have the design subject to approval?
Say that again?
Can you put in the ordinance, they, they, they come for approval for the sign and, and the design has to be approved?
Yeah, I guess we can do that, right?
Sounds a lot better.
Their coming before the board.
So when Taco Bell was before the zoning board, there was a big thing about the monument sign on the side road. Because there was the whole thing about the type of wood or wood looking was actually written into the code, I thought.
Resolution.
The re, but I, I thought it was.
Or not even a resolution.
Most of the signs on Valley are, a lot of them are wood.
But I, but I think that's actually written in somewhere, and I'm, I'm struggling to remember exactly what it was because there was a large, there was a long discussion about the sign on that side road and also the replacement of the Bank of America sign, also having to be wood or wood looking. So if it was styrofoam, it had to look like wood. So I believe there's actually something already written in about how the sign has to appear if it's a monument sign. If it wasn't the monument sign, I think that it wasn't subject to the same rules, which is why they're.
So, so the action I'm taking away is, one, we're gonna decide on the side, side of the sign. Two, action is to take a look at the wood sign variant, see how that ties back to this.
Yeah, I think that the, the, the wood sign thing is a whole separate discussion. Because if you go, if you drive Valley Road from, yeah, pretty much from mountain as far as Valley Auto, sixteen percent of the businesses have conforming signs. Eighty-four percent of the businesses do not have conforming signs. Their signs are in every case granted by variance with the site plan. You've got, it turns out that it is only the local businesses without deep pockets to fight the sign ordinance. Those are the businesses that put up conforming signs, like for example, the funeral home has a conforming sign because it's, he can't fight it like the gas stations can. The gas stations put up their big signs which do not fit the ordinance. We've got to rethink the commercial signs, signage of the, the nationwide chains of gas stations, restaurants, whatso, whatever. And I think that's beyond, it's a separate discussion from this discussion about home.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're getting into apples and oranges here. This is a sign on a residential house. It has nothing to do with the commercial signs.
Thank you.
And my, one minor point is I, I would just keep it to two square feet, as it says, right, in about residence designation size not exceeding two square feet in area. So I just keep it consistent. I don't care if it's eighteen by eighteen or whatever. I don't care if it's 18 by 18, or whatever that may.
So G, G is the one that says four square feet. The one that you just referenced is E.
Which is two square.
Which is two square feet.
Correct. So I just keep it in.
So that's still one foot by two. No matter how you stack two square feet, one by two.
Well, no, 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 one by two is different to two square feet.
A four-square-foot sign that conforms to the wood look ordinance
One foot by two feet is two square feet, right?
Seems perfectly reasonable to grant without a variance of any sort. If somebody wants to put a four-foot neon sign in front of their house, then they can ask for variance.
Okay.
So what's the, what's, what's the decision on?
So.
Yeah, so can we move to the?
What was this decision, Tom? Where are you going?
So you want to go not exceeding two square feet?
Yeah, not exceeding two square feet. That'd be, that's.
Put this into edit mode. All right. Any objections to that?
No.
Do we have a vote on that? How do we do that?
No.
We just, we just submit to you, and then it goes, goes through?
Well, no, because we have to make the changes to the actual ordinance.
Right. It still, it still has to go to the?
It would have to go to the Board of Attorney, yeah.
And then it goes to the TC, and it goes through all that process, right? Okay.
It has to go through readings and all that.
Okay. So the, so I'm gonna write notes as I talk about this next one. The next one is the residential sheds. We had a minor subdivision come, which was a lot line adjustment, where we had an existing shed on a property that was like, I want to say 400 square feet. Looking at the ordinance of residential sheds, maximum shed size can, is only 100 square feet. And we talked in that meeting, in, in open discussion that we actually allow up to 200 square feet before we start challenging residents, because there is tax implications.
And I think Deb pointed out the UCC code.
Well, in clarification, we really don't, if, if, if an applicant comes in and wants to build a 500-square-foot shed, they want to call it a shed, we don't tell them they can, as long as they meet the criteria of some of the other bulk requirements on the lot. But that being said, like Don said, any, UCC states anything over 200 square feet requires construction permits in addition to zoning.
I am passing down a picture of a 200-square-foot shed, which looks like a one-car garage. In fact, I think it's being sold by Home Depot as a one-car garage. But it's a shed. It's legally a shed, and it's 192 square feet. And according to our ordinance, that could be placed 10 foot from your lot line, whereas a garage attached to a house has to be subject to the normal side yard or rear yard setbacks. And I am suggesting that anybody who wants to put a shed that big, or a, or a temporary garage that big, 10 foot from the lot line, can't get that for free. He's gotta come for a variance, and he's gotta listen to the neighbors complain. Here's another picture of a 200-square-foot shed. This one happens to be a tent, and I'm not sure tents are covered by our shed ordinance.
Well, I think you're getting into a deeper discussion about accessory structures in general, because unfortunately, our code under accessory structures, detached garages, pole barns, sheds, those all, those things only have 10-foot setbacks. And they don't come with size limits. If you meet impervious coverage and the zoning bulk requirements, there's nothing to stop, there's nothing to say no.
I also think the motivation of editing these ordinances is to not make people have to come for every single thing. So I, I don't, I respect your opinion, I just don't agree.
I would say that if you wanted, and, and Board Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong, if you want to put stricter setback rules on accessory structures in general, you would have to pick a size. So if an accessory structure is over, say, 400 square feet, because pole barns can run from 500 square feet to 2,000 square feet, but currently, they only have a 10-foot setback.
I think you're absolutely correct. If we had a sliding scale
Yes.
of, of setbacks, it might be acceptable. But I'm not sure I want that in my neighbor's yard, regardless of how far it is from the property line. That's an awfully big structure.
One, I don't, I can't remember which town it was, Hazlet, maybe, maybe not, but their definition, construction permit is not required for garden type, used to, similar structures at 200 square feet or less in area, and less than 10 feet in height. I thought that was interesting, a height inclusion in that size. Because I think those are more than 10 feet, the examples you showed. So I could quite.
Oh, yeah, I don't ever see sheds that are under 10 feet, ever. They're usually, standard is between 12 and 15.
Well, mine's probably about 10, and it's not, it's probably 100 square feet.
This looks taller than.
It's definitely looks taller than 10 feet. So I don't know if there's some way we can limit the height, so it doesn't become a two-story, 200, you know, there has to be some limit somewhere. I agree with Dennis, I think, at least in some other dimension.
Again, accessory structure across the board, regardless of what it is, is 20-foot height.
Incidentally, if you look at the Home Depot catalog, you can find sheds that cost $77,000, but they're still sheds.
Yeah, I'm sure you're right.
They have power and running water.
Versus this shed ordinance.
Because the shed falls under accessory structure.
And, but it does limit it to 10 feet.
10 feet high?
No, no, 10 by 10. Oh, wait, property line, no, 10 feet from property.
10 feet from property line.
From property line.
There's no height.
And then David, were you reading?
I'm saying somewhere else included a height limitation. I think that's an interesting concept that we should consider.
Some of these sheds have like a loft area where you can store stuff above.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
It's not a full eight foot. It might be six feet at the.
There's some that are full eight feet. In my neighborhood, they have people, and they trail them in.
10 by 10 will have that little loft section where you can store stuff up.
So that sort of thing maybe should come before the boards, but maybe there's some, again, this 10-foot was what I read. I thought that sounded reasonable. I don't know what the physical attribute, you know, if, if you've got 200 square foot, you have to be something, well, depends on the pitch of the roof and stuff, but whatever, I think height.
You can pick and choose what, which accessory structures you want in height. You could say no more than 10, you know, 15. I think 10 feet could be a little low for certain sheds, but, I mean, personally, from what I see as a zoning officer, come across my desk.
Yeah, but they, they did specify this town, sheds 10 foot.
They, they may have. I'm just saying, from what I see, the majority of the time.
Are we talking, we're not talking about the.
Right, that might be 40 years old, once it's were 10 feet high.
Like, you could, you could put more specifics on a detached garage or a whole.
I can have an eight-foot fence.
So, wait, just, just for clarification, because are we talking about sheds or accessory structures that we're saying they're one in the same? Because I'm hearing they're really one in the same.
When you call it a shed, right, when you call it a shed, we don't really have a size limit. We don't recognize a size limit on the, on a shed specifically. We just say anything over 200 square feet needs to have construction permits in addition, and must meet the 10-foot side, side, you know, side or rear yard setback and a, and maximum 20 feet height.
20 feet's very high. I wouldn't want a 20-foot height.
I've never seen a shed that.
That's a two-story, two-story shed.
Whatever height, but yeah. 10-foot was the example here.
But that's, that's what the code currently reads. That's why I'm saying, if you wanted to break it out by certain structures,
Other codes.
you would have to add definitions. The definition of a shed is, this is what the board believes is the definition of a shed, or a detached garage, or a pole barn, or a, a barn for equine, you know, that kind of thing.
I mean, would it make sense, Tom, to consider back to the sliding scale, based on the side, the size, a certain setback?
Yeah, if it's 100 square feet, it's 10 by 10. If it's 200 square feet, just for round numbers, it's 20, 20 feet setback. It's 300, if it's 300, it's 30 feet setback. Just throw, just to throw a slide scale.
So I can have an eight-foot fence along my property line, and I have to move my shed 20 feet off my property line with it as an eight-foot wall on it? That, that doesn't seem like a very good idea.
If you have 100 square foot, you gotta move it 10 feet.
If, if my yard is fenced in, why can't I put it right in the corner of your yard, an eight-foot fence? Because their eight, their walls are eight, less than usually eight feet on the shed, and it's the pitch of the roof that makes the problem.
Regardless of fence.
So some says you might have to plop in the center of your yard then, if that's, you know, if you're looking at a big enough shed.
Well, some people have small lots, some people have big lots, right? So you can only put what you can put in.
Back to what the goal was, as Teresa mentioned, we're trying to create something that's a little easier to get through the process without having to come to the boards. I think the, the other thing to maybe soften the structure is, of course, using planting or screening in regards to that structure. So 10 feet isn't a whole lot of room in some instances to get the planting to soften the structure from the neighborhood.
The, the problem, Don, is that in order to get plantings, you've got to get an order from the board that requires plantings. If you just make it free by right in the ordinance, nobody's gonna just voluntarily throw plantings in because the ordinance tells them they have to.
Okay.
It's gotta be part of a resolution from the board.
All right. So for the sake of time, we're gonna take residential sheds off. I'm gonna take your feedback and come back with another proposal.
I wonder if you come up with like a, like two or three options to choose from.
Incidentally, there is one place in town.
Informally voted on.
There is one place in town where you can find two violations of the shed setback ordinance back to back. Two people have put sheds up against the property line, and because the two sheds are back to back at the property line, neither one of them notices the other one. You can find that on Union Street, just west of Maine.
I mean, let's face it, if we patrolled and looked for sheds, we'd be very busy. Wouldn't get anything able to work done.
Yeah, I think there's some, I think there's some sheds on property lines.
Oh, there's, and, and honestly, unless it comes to me for, you know, something else, and I notice, oh, well, your shed's only two feet off, oh, well, that was, you know, we're, we're not policing for sheds unless they're coming for other zoning issues, or coming for a board application.
So just, just to note, 100 square feet, you don't get taxed for it. When you go plus 100 square feet, then you're gonna get taxed for it. And that's the other reason that this is why people, if you're putting a 200-square-foot shed, you're gonna be paying taxes on that.
Oh, I don't speak tax, so.
Okay. Well, I'm just telling you. So, all right, so I'm gonna park that, and we'll work on, coming back with some, 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 some suggestions. All right. So now fence walls and hedges. So currently, the construct, construction permit shall be required for fences four feet, four or more feet higher conforming to the height limits for same as set forth in this section. So this, I think our construction permits say six feet, is that right? And that's, that's conforming with the MLUL, or?
No, it's UCC.
UCC. So the request is to change from four to six, to align with that.
And if you're higher than six, requires construction.
So a four-foot fence, we're not gonna ask for a construction permit?
No, just zoning.
For a, for a six-foot fence and greater, we would.
No, up to a six-foot, you, you can be, you can do a six-foot without a construction permit.
Six-foot one.
Six-foot one, yes, six-foot five, anything above six-foot, yes.
Is that if you're putting a new fence, or what if you're replacing a fence?
Either, either way.
And does that include deer fencing?
Deer fencing.
Absolutely. The only time I, if somebody is replacing a fence like for like, and they had a previous zoning application that I, we, we let them do that, like for like, but if they're changing it, moving it, doing anything, then they, we still require.
If you're just replacing a 50-year-old fence to make it look nicer in the same spot, you.
Right, but if you're changing the actual material, we make people get.
So if you go from metal to wood?
Right, or wood to vinyl, right.
Right.
We require.
That's understandable.
If you're going metal to metal, or wood to wood.
But if you're replacing like for like.
Okay.
So is it just changing four to six feet? There's no other?
No other changes.
Yeah.
Any concerns?
Unless it's a dog fence. Which has to be some, what, six or nine feet back from the property line?
Are you talking about an invisible fence?
But it can be taller. Have you reconciled this with the dog fence ordinance?
This looks like a boundary fence. This ordinance looks like it talks about a boundary. All permitted fences shall be situated on the lot in such a manner that the finished side of the fence shall face adjacent to properties. No fence shall be erected of barbed wire topped with metal spikes and all those kind of things that we get people pinned in. So this looks like a perimeter fence. It's not a pool fence. Pool fences are different, right? Treat it different.
Pool fences are handled entirely by the construction department.
Okay, because of the pool?
Correct.
Yeah. Dog fences are not handled by the construction.
Correct.
Unless they're six, over six feet.
Correct.
But it is a dog fence.
And tennis courts have fencing requirements, which are different. There, there's, there's a, no height restriction, I don't think, on tennis court fences.
But if you're gonna construct a tennis court, you can probably go into construction.
Maybe we should pull all this together in one place.
I'm just fixing the four-foot section, okay? I'm just dealing with the four-foot section.
Because if you put your tennis court close enough to the property line, you can put a 12-foot fence on the property line.
And then you'd need construction permit.
Yeah, that's, that's the sole issue. It's just, it's just for the construction permit. The limitations on height are separate.
And it's just anything over six.
You're going for construction, anything over six.
Are we comfortable with that proposal? Yeah.
We're talking going four to six.
Correct.
You're either getting a construction permit, or you're not.
Next.
Okay. All right. We'll send that to you.
So those two now go to Deb?
Yep.
And they go down that, that chart?
They start that line, yep.
Okay, great. And then, but the middle one takes, we're taking that for a little while.
We're gonna take that back and do some work. I took some notes on that. I'll do some research on the generator ordinance. I don't know if that'll be here. We've got a couple other things that we started talking about. I will have a meeting set up for next week. We'll do a Zoom some sort, so Dave and Teresa will come together and sort of pull some stuff together. All right. But every meeting, we're gonna try to have one or two, or, or bucket of things when we can, and this is the kind of conversation that we need to bring things together.
And thank you very much for facilitating the discussion. Thank you, Board of Directors.
Thank you.
Okay, on to just the old and new business. I just really have one thing that I just want to emphasize with regards to communication with the board. We had a little bit of a challenge in our last meeting in not being able to establish a quorum, and I just, again, make an earnest request for communication. And the communication in the form of when the agenda goes out by Friday, and we're pledging, working with our board professionals to ensure that we have all, especially for applications, any information that needs to be reviewed is to be released by Friday of the week prior, prior to the Tuesday meeting, and that you respond if you are either, can make it or not make it. So we need an RSVP is the bottom line from all the board members, so that we can establish if the meeting can continue and a quorum will be held. To the best of our, we understand that emergencies are gonna develop. We get it, and we just ask that.
Is everyone comfortable, this particular last, today's meeting, I sent out in the form of an invite, email invitation, as per Deputy Mayor Lavender's suggestion. So is everybody comfortable with that format and just saying accept?
How many people did not respond?
I didn't, no, I didn't.
Including the chairman and the vice chairman?
Everybody.
I didn't. I didn't.
I didn't realize that's what you're doing.
I don't think I did.
I did it on my phone, and I never.
You did it, I, I think there were four, four or five that didn't respond to the actual.
Yeah, this, this is a problem that we also have on the zoning board.
Yeah.
All right. We have this problem on the township committee as well. And part of it has, excuse me.
Yeah.
Part of this has to do with people don't check email, right? Email's becoming passe. Now, I have suggested texting, and I understand why, you know, wanna text, but maybe what we need to do is pick up the phone and call people the Friday before the meeting, and just get a verbal on that. I mean, that's what I do at work. If I'm thrown a, a sales meeting, I need to know that the people that are helping me run it are gonna be there. But this is, we're having this problem in every board in town, right? It's not just this board. So that's my two cents.
Dennis, did you have a comment?
A part of the problem at the last meeting, the meeting that did not have a quorum, was that the agenda was actually posted on the website on Friday. was that the agenda was actually posted on the website on Friday, because I went looking for it on Friday, because I had no other input. But there was never a broadcast to the general mailing list of the town that the agenda was available on the website. That broadcast never happened, and I suspect that's a fault of the website people.
Actually, it did happen. I have a copy of it.
And the, well, I didn't, I didn't see it. And then it was 1:00 on Tuesday that we got the board distribution of the agenda and the package. And that, by that point, it was too late, because I didn't actually read the 1:00 email until after 5:00 on Tuesday. So yes, we need to have a discipline.
Yes, and it's, thank you for bringing that up, because it's a two-way street. We're pledging to get information out on the agenda and the materials for that meeting the following week by Friday, period. That seems to be about the best we're going to be able to do in some instances, especially corralling and getting board professional reports in and everything else on time.
Which I've also had a discussion...
We're pledging that back. We're just asked in reciprocation that we get communication back from all you. And I think, I think that if we in earnest check our email and know that something's coming in on Friday, that would certainly help. And to your point...
It's just very simple. I know where I need to be the second and fourth Tuesday and Wednesday. I know that for October. I know July, I've got one meeting. And I think the thing that was frustrating the last time is, when we don't have a quorum, we're paying for the professionals, right? For what, half of the meeting? And again, it's not just this board, it's the zoning board, and like, stuff's getting backed up, and people are starting to talk, right? And we almost missed a township committee meeting. Two people didn't respond until the last minute, until Scott got on the phone and started saying, where are you guys going to be? I missed the first meeting that I ever missed in four years, this past Wednesday. If I didn't make those calls, we wouldn't have had a quorum. Right? So it's, it's really everybody individually, let's just make sure that we're proactively...
It's self-accountability, Deputy Mayor.
And the township committee gets beat up for this. I don't know if you guys read Facebook, but we take a lot of guff, right?
And the board members have my cell, I mean, emergencies happen, so you all have my cellphone number. So you can text me, or you have the chairman's cellphone number, you know, God forbid emergencies, you know, hey, something came up, I'm not going to be able to make it. That's life, absolutely, so.
And please feel free, you know, you get credit for coming to the meeting even if it's a bit late.
Yeah, it's not, it's not appropriate, it's not appropriate for me as the board secretary to text you guys as board members, because the approved method of communication for me to you is technically email. But in an emergency scenario, when you, I mean, that's appropriate for you to send me a message or give me a call on my cellphone to say, you know, there's been an emergency, I can't make it.
I think normally you do it, I would do it the day before, right? Unless it's an emergency.
Well, I'd say, listen, 18 board members that I deal with, there's probably only two or three that I have real issues with as far as not communicating with them. But for the most part, this board, everybody here is...
I think we should all be able to respond and let you know ahead of time. I don't think we need to go anything dramatic.
Since I give you all the dates, or you actually vote on the dates?
She had to send you the agenda on Friday, but she doesn't have to send it to me.
Yeah, I just know, whatever.
Good. Are we good, guys? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So motioned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.